All the meeting in order.
Before we get into presentations for tonight, just a couple of housekeeping. We do have some new people here. All public comment will come from the front of the room where the stand is here. We'll ask the people to come up identify them since they're going to get public comments. We'll do the floor first, then we usually do Zoom after that. We asked only one trip to the microphone per session to the amount of people that are here. We're going to start with the presentation from the Tustin Youth Commission.
We thought it would be a good time to give a little presentation to the community and the board. We know some questions arose over the last few meetings about what is the Tustin Youth? Who do you serve in the community? How are you funded? Where do you spend those monies on? So we put together some information and we thought I'll answer some of those questions. So my name is Kelly Agar. I'm part of the Tustin Youth Commission and I'm also the bookkeeper for the town of Tustin. The Tustin Youth Commission was actually created in 1985 and it was then it became a town board committee. And interesting, the original board members were Art Hocker, Mary Tembus, Ron Scherin, Pastor Beck, Pat Feagles, Betty Gettle, Ralph Hubner, Elaine Gigeri, Tom Barnes, and Lainball. So the mission of the Tustin Youth is to provide the youth of our town and community with new exciting experiences. It is to promote healthy relationships between peers and families. It is to encourage positive community engagement, participation, and collaboration. All the Tustin Youth members have always been volunteers. They are appointed and approved by the town board. The town board has two liaisons to the youth committee. Currently, that is Jane Luxinger and Grant Triggs. The Tustin Youth Board has nine seats. Right now, six of them are filled. Rose is looking for volunteers. If anyone's interested, let us know. But I'd like to introduce you to the current board. There are some faces that you probably don't see and they deserve the recognition because they've put a lot of work in. Crystal Weston is the Tustin Town Clerk since 2017. She is our chair. She has been a member since 2013. She's a mom of four. Lauren Smith in our audience tonight is a special education teacher. She is our vice chair. She's been a member since 2016 and is a mom of two. I, as you've said, is Kelly Agar. I'm the bookkeeper and confidential secretary to the supervisor since 2020. I am the treasurer of Tustin Youth and I've been a member since 2013 and am a mom of two. Deette Saul, who many of you probably know from the mailroom. She is a Narisburg Coastal Carrier. She is our secretary. She's been a member since 2013 and is a mom of three. Newer to the board is Ashley Vampless-Cotin. She's an elementary teacher, a board member since 2022, and a mom of two children. And lastly is Jocelyn Strumpler, who many of you may also know. She works for the town of Tustin as our court clerk, our building clerk, and also our water sewer clerk. She's worked for the town since 2003. She's been a member of Tustin Youth since 2006 and she's a mom of one. I know there were a lot of questions on our funding and it can be confusing process if you're not familiar with how the youth organization works. Tustin Youth Commission is funded in part by County of Sullivan and New York State Office of Family Services through the Sullivan County Youth Bureau, as well as the town of Tustin. And always we receive donations from our community. Now, the way we receive our funding is directly from the town. The town allocates funds in the town budget. And this is essentially fronting the Tustin Youth Commission, the money for the events. The Tustin Youth Commission Board is responsible for completing extensive annual paperwork for this entire grant. We have to fill out a grant application. In this application, we do have to complete a narrative. And in the narrative, we have to, in detail, talk about our target population, participation outcomes, program design, and schedules of our operations, monitoring events, evaluation, programming staff, whether it be paid or volunteer, your agency's mission, and also past accomplishments. Just to let you know, when I said the Tustin Youth Commission fills its paperwork out, it is primarily done by the chair, at least since we've been very active in the board and become officers. So that would be Crystal and I help her as needed as I can to complete the paperwork. But she is our primary contact with the youth services in the county. Once Tustin Youth completes this narrative, it always, not the narrative itself, not paperwork per se, but like any grant, she seeks approval from the town board to apply for a grant. We get that approval. It is submitted to the county. And then the town, not Tustin Youth, the town will receive a letter from the county indicating the amount that the town of Tustin is eligible to receive as a reimbursement. So this grant is a reimbursable grant. You have to spend the funds and then you'll get the money back. So remember, the town board has already budgeted a certain amount of money without knowing that exact number. It's usually based off of past years, but it's not a guarantee. So at that point, our events are now happening throughout the year. To jump to the finishing paperwork for the grant and the reimbursement, this is the responsibility of the Tustin Youth Commission Board members. This is something we do all help with gathering. It's a lot of work. We have to submit for all the events that we want to get money back from, all the paperwork attached to it. So we have to keep track of all of our receipts that we purchased for anything, our bank statements, our canceled checks, the participant demographics. We keep track through a registration process of the age of the children. This always goes back to the target population. I mean, they want to know all the demographics of our youth. This then, the actual assembling usually falls to our chair. Again, I will assist if it's needed. It is then submitted to the county. The youth service board collects it and then it goes to the county audit department. And the county audit department, their job is to exactly that. They audit it. They make sure we've submitted everything we're trying to get the funds back for. Sometimes we forget something, then it gets kicked back. So that can be a lot of going back and forth. Once it's correct and it's accepted, they let us know. Paperwork is filled out. It's signed off on by the town supervisor that this is the claim and it is all correct, officially submitted, and then eventually the town, again, the town of Tustin, not Tustin Youth, receives a check for the reimbursement. So I hope that helps a little bit. And how do you get your money? Where does it come from? I know it's a little confusing. But also, anytime anyone has a question, you're more than welcome to shoot us an email, give us a call. And that's how that's done. Now, how do we spend the money? I know that was also a concern and a question. So at the beginning of the year, we have our annual meeting in January. We reach out to all of our members. Like I said, there's six of us right now. And we throw the ideas out. Come to the meeting prepared. As you know, we're all moms, we don't have a lot of time. So these are always after-work meetings, usually 6:30. Have ideas? Please do your research. So come with group, come with information. And then we get together and we just discuss it. What have we already done? Is this maybe too soon to go to the Bronx Zoo? Because we went there two years ago. It's that sort of back and forth. But something very important is we have to look at that narrative that we've submitted to the county. Do these events that we're researching and discussing meet our narrative? So like I've already mentioned, have we done similar events? Were they successful? Maybe it was a poor turnout, so maybe we won't try it again. Are we meeting the needs of all of our youth in the community? And by that, there are dietary needs we have to think about. We've taken a trip to Boston and we were enclosed on a bus. We had some peanut allergies. So we really had to be very mindful of who was sitting there, who, what snacks you're bringing on the bus. There's sensory needs, the kids on the spectrum, physical needs, disabilities, emotional, mental. We try to be very aware so that the events we do can serve any and all children and what they require. Also, something important to consider is financial needs. Thank you. Not everybody can afford a trip. And if we take a trip, for example, to an amusement park, we can pay for our Tustin Youth child, but their family still has to purchase the tickets for $89. They still have to be able to have a vehicle and have gas money to get down to Hershey, Pennsylvania and back. So it's not meeting the needs of all the families. So it's something we have discussed at length. And there was a point in time where it was mostly trips for Tustin Youth. That's also based on the amount of active board members they had. Because the community event or hands-on event takes a lot of volunteers. We do essentially have four types of trips. We have group trips, which I just mentioned. And in that, Tustin Youth Commission will pay for a Tustin child or Tustin Youth. What is a Tustin Youth? You must reside in the town of Tustin or own property in the town of Tustin. So this also includes second homeowners who don't go to school here. And sometimes they think they're not eligible, but they are. They have a home here. So even if they come here once a year, their children are entitled to everything we do. Living here, that includes renters. It's okay that they don't pay taxes. Their children, because they live here, are still eligible. So for our group trips, those are the kids we're paying for. However, we usually get a group rate because group rates are sometimes small, 20 people. We always meet that. Their parents, of course, are going to go with them. We always say, we're not responsible for your children on a group event, so you need a legal guardian. We have a registration process. We have paperwork that needs to be filled out with all the legal releases, all their information, their age, are you a Tustin resident? All of that information, we keep that on file for every event. But because we have a group rate, we will offer that group rate to the public at large. So this enables my daughter's best friend, who goes to Sullivan West and lives in Jeffersonville. Well, they can still come with the group rate, but we're not paying our funds on that child. We have community events, which most of you are aware of. We have Fourth of July and Christmas. We, logging days we participate in. These are events we don't pay by the head. Excuse me. And discussions with the youth service, they love to see these events because part of the funds we receive are state funds. And they love to see us supporting the community at large. Fourth of July is, of course, our biggest. And I'll get to the detail of that a little bit later. But the more children we can serve within the county, within the state, we've gotten great feedback from, from youth services. But again, that's not by the head. So if an event, let's just say is $1,000, you may have 25 Tustin Youth there who are still enjoying it, but maybe 15 or 25 Jeffersonville kids came. They're all enjoying that together. Weekly programming is something else we've done. We had Fort Delaware Kids Camp last summer, I think it was, which was very successful. This is where we are sending the kids somewhere and there's a programming and it's on a weekly basis. This is a lot of volunteer hours. But, and it depends on the program itself. Fort Delaware, we paid by the head. Just Tustin Youth was that one. It was a rotating schedule. We've also partnered with the Tustin Social this year for an extensive weekly program. And we'll talk more on that later, but it's been very successful. So it's still new in our scope of programming. And then individualized. This came about in 2020 when the pandemic hit. We had to change how we did everything. We reached out to the county. What are the guidelines? What can we do? And we're very proud to say we were one of the few youth groups in the entirety of Sullivan County to continue programming. We met all the guidelines of the WHO and New York State. And we created kits. We were able to social distance and still get the kids involved. We did STEM kits, art kits, Lego kits, sports kits for the kids, where we did a registration. This is for Tustin Youth modeling. We did a registration process. We went shopping. We put the kits together. We contacted the parents. And we had contactless pickup, whether it was at the town hall outside or we left it on the front porch. And then we interacted with them online. Sometimes it was Zoom. Sometimes we had a contest, show us what you made for your art project. So we were really proud of that project. We don't, we don't really do that too much anymore unless it's attached to a holiday. Sometimes we do gingerbread kits for Tustin Youth around Christmas time or for Halloween. What we found, though, after COVID is that the needs of the children changed. They, after dealing for two years of quarantine, social distancing, dealing with this illness itself and the virus, homeschooling, mask wearing, when we did finally start to socialize in small groups, we saw a rise of anxiety, depression. And one of the most impactful, they forgot how to socialize. There was a generation of children who have never socialized. They should have been in school for two years already. They didn't know how to communicate with other children. So suddenly, we're trying to get back to normal and put these events together. And we saw a huge need for more community programming. So that's really why you see, if you have followed Tustin Youth, the rise in community programming and how that's grown and grown because they just grew. And we didn't know what would happen, but you start one year small and then the next, it just grows. And suddenly, we're like, oh gosh, we've outgrown Main Street, you know? So we went to Fort Delaware for an event because there were just so many people. And it was wonderful, successful. So that's essentially what our events are, how we get, you know, promote them to the children. And we can't go over all the events we've done, of course. But this year, I can lay out for you the Tustin Youth that we have actually served, who's in the community now, and in the budget for that. How we find the kids, though? And I know some people have said to us, isn't there like a book, a registration book? No. So it's just word of mouth is, and we're always open to suggestions from the community. I remember when my child, 15 years ago, someone said, you should go talk to Johnson at the town hall. They'll pay for your kid to go to Great Wolf Lodge. And I thought, nothing, who does that? Nobody does that. Because there's not an official flyer, so to speak. So it's word of mouth. So we have a lot of regulars. But then we'll have a parent walk in and maybe they're here for the weekend from Manhattan for the weekend home. Say, I heard about you. That's how we get the kids in. Deette on the mailroom is always telling people about Tustin Youth. Johnson in the building department, she sees the new people coming in. She's always, you know, Barry Becker is always telling people when he sells a house and Dawn, the same thing. So there really isn't an official registration outlet. So we register per event. So per event, we can tell you how many Tustin Youth kids went to that event. I can't give a solid number. How many Tustin Youth are there outside of going by the Census Bureau? Which I think was 261. Jane helped with that one, 261 in 2020?
2020 and estimate, it's a five-year estimate as well.
Okay. And we did reach out to Sullivan West because this was a solid number. We didn't know. How many children from Tustin are enrolled in Sullivan West? So this would be K through your senior year. What was that, Crystal?
147.
147. So and then that's not counting 511. So for this year, January, February, and March are winter months. We, I should tell you, you've asked about budget. How do you do that? We do create a budget. A budget is very fluid. It's always changing. And not only based on funds, but based on our availability as volunteers. But we'll get to that around Halloween and Christmas. And this winter, we did skiing, tubing, snowboarding. That included tickets, rental lessons, and this was just for our Tustin Youth. We budgeted $500 because we don't know, you know, how people will respond to that. We serve 25 Tustin Youth and their families. Our $500 budget was blown out of the water because we spent $1,142 on it because we didn't want to turn the kids away. So that meant we readjust. So we looked at the movies. That was going to be a $600 budget, so we took the movies away. This is another reason we don't like to put our entire schedule out for the community because things change that way. March was a big month because I saw the beginning of our weekly programming and our first partnership with the Tustin Social. There was no budget for this because it was a pop-up idea. Reddit came to us, the Tustin Social had this idea and we saw the need for it. So we said, okay, let's do it. We budgeted, I want to say $200, and we helped with snacks. We set it up where the kids take the Sullivan West bus after school here to our hall. Some parents drop them off. We have programming for the middle school and high school kids in the beginning. And then at 4:30, we rest an entire bus of kids, loads off here every week. So that ran from March to June, the very first session. And it served 450 children over seven weekly programs. It was very successful. That was in partnership with Bethel on Main. They provided the art aspect. And Tustin Social organized that and funded it with Bethel on Main. So it's a true partnership. April, May, and June, we did a group trip, which we haven't done in quite a while. Hershey Park was agreed on. We budgeted $2,500. Again, went over budget. We had a good turnout. We spent on Tustin Youth children $3,082.80 and that served 54 Tustin Youth. However, as I mentioned, it's a group rate and we do open it to the community, family members, and friends. They sign up with us, even if you're a student in Jeffersonville and your family wants to come. You still have to fill out a form. You have to sign all our legal releases, give all your information. And we are a pass-through for their money. So even though we aren't paying for them, we collect their money with everybody else, goes into our bank account, and we pay the one big amount to Hershey Park. And that amount was $7,611. So it was a good turnout and we were happy with it before Tustin Youth. Finding an event that appeals to all ages has been near impossible. So that's a lot of times why you'll see the numbers fluctuate. Skiing, that it doesn't do much for ages five and below. But we had a lot of six and up, I'd say. That also saw the continuation of working with the Tustin Social. We did a summer youth club. We tried to be outside as much as possible down at the park as weather would allow. That was a five-week session and we didn't know how it would go. We usually see a dip in numbers in summertime just because families are traveling, it's vacation time. A lot of kids, even if they're not on vacation, they're in day camp because mom and dad goes to work. So there were a lot of kids who couldn't participate. But we still served 175 kids. Every year, we do the Wayne County Fair. That again is strictly for Tustin Youth. We served 49 Tustin Youth. We budgeted 500 and we spent $588. That was a pretty close sum. Moving in to the summer, obviously Fourth of July, most of you are aware of. That's a big one in cost. We budgeted this year $4,000 from donations from the businesses and individuals in our community. We received $16,000 to help put this event on. We also work with the Chamber of Commerce. They sponsor a good portion of the event as well. But the total event cost that Tustin Youth Commission wrote a check for, $24,000. And we did go over budget. We spent $7,482 of Tustin Youth Commission funds on that event. And we served between 700 and 1,000 children. Those are the numbers we submitted to the county. September saw the continuation of the after-school Tustin Club program. It's still in session. It's a 15-week session, again, partnership with Tustin Social. Financially, they carry that program. They pay Bethel on Main for the art portion of it. We work with the library. There's many legs of that. And so far, up to this date, Tustin Club tomorrow, we've served 210 kids. I have 30 kids already registered and lots of parents waiting to hear back from us tonight to finalize as soon as we leave here. Again, this weekly program in terms of Tustin Youth, this is not taking up a chunk of our funds. We help with snacks here and there. We help with our craft supplies that we store here at the town hall. This program is our time. We show up, we're volunteer, we're hands-on. Crystal and I handle all the registration. We handle all the paperwork for these families. October, November, and December saw some plans changing in our budget. Like I said, it's not just based on the financial change in your budget. It's what our volunteers can give. And some years are just easy years here, for whatever reason. But this year, we've had a lot of struggles personally among our board. Not with each other, but sicknesses, a whole range of issues. And we just don't have the time. We had to downsize Halloween from Fort Delaware, which is a wonderful success. We had to downsize Christmas as well. We just don't have the, the man hours to put in. That also changed our budget, knowing we would downsize. So Halloween ended up costing $2,385. And logging days, which if any of you attended, was a really rainy day. So we had made the decision to not put funds into a bounce house and things that we knew the kids weren't. It's not best meeting the kids' needs. That's not meeting our narrative. We knew we wouldn't have a huge turnout there. So we ended up buying pumpkins for the kids to paint and we set up tents and had some small games. So that was a combined budget of $2,600. Christmas is our next event coming up. It's going to be on December 2nd. We are working with the chamber. We will be on Main Street. That's a Saturday. And we're, we will have Santa again and our photographer taking professional photos for families, all for free. And this is a community event, so this is open to everybody. And we are working with the DVAA on this. We will be centered there and you can find us up in Crow's Hall. We're always looking for volunteers. We're looking for Who's. We're bringing back Whoville and we have fun costumes, which Greg knows all about. So on that note, the volunteer time put into this program can't be stressed enough. And it's not just our board. But it is safe to say that this board has put thousands and thousands of volunteer hours in one year. Halloween was one of our most recent ones. And we quickly went through from every little step of it. For a three-hour event, we put in 174 volunteer hours for three hours of a community program. To calculate what we put in for Fourth of July, it's near impossible because we start keeping a log right now. But as I said, it's, it's not just the board. We work with many partnerships in this town over the years. We have partnered with the Tustin Social, DVAA, the Delaware Company of Fort Delaware, programming with the Chi Hive, Bethel on Main, the Union, the Narisburg Chamber of Commerce, National Park Services, Sullivan West PTSO, the Narisburg Lava Fire Department. We always work with the Solomon County Sheriff's Department and New York State Troopers for our community events. And I hope I didn't forget anybody there. And I can't even start to list the businesses and individuals who have financially supported us with funds, with candy for Halloween, craft supplies. I mean, some of you in the audience, I mean, you're, you always support us. So thank you so much for that. Because without the community, none of this is possible. It doesn't matter if we have $50,000. We need hands and we need to be a community. And our volunteers, their moms, their business owners, board members, seniors in the community, the organizations. But one of our biggest supporters are actually the youth. We have seen our kids, a generation of We have seen our kids, a generation of kids at the age of two when we joined. They're now teenagers. And these are the kids, they are our wives. They are now our volunteers. They say, let let us dress up in the gingerbread costume on Halloween, and we let them do it. And it's a beautiful thing because this is the next generation of your volunteers, of your fire department, um, Tustin Youth. So I hope that helps some of you explain why we do what we do, how we do it. Um, I hope it helped answer some questions, and if you have more, you can always ask any of us outside of a board meeting. So it's fine.
I just want to say as liaison, I've uh watched the Tuscan Youth. They had, um, they used to have their event, which was kind of on the small side. And they've grown to blockbuster events, and I just think it's a great thing for all of you. They've done a fabulous job, all of them.
So did you say something regarding the Tuscan Social and the Tustin Youth?
Hey, everybody. Um, it's a lot of familiar faces, but some unfamiliar faces. If people don't know me, put a little. Anyways, talking for this. Um, this, uh, those who don't know me, my name is Brethera Knudsen. Uh, I'm one of the co-founders, um, of Tustin Social. I, uh, um, just by way of background, has been asked to give some explanation for what Tustin Social is, how we came about. And uh, and um, and to speak a little bit about the youth club. So, um, my name, I, my husband and I, um, moved up to the area, uh, full-time members in twenty twenty. Uh, we've been coming up to the area for about ten years prior. Um, and I have an office in Marisburg, um, and, um, co-founded the Tuscan Social with Greg Triggs. Um, one of the reasons, uh, that we co-founded it, um, and it does disprove that in this community, all things lead back to Bernie Prima. We, um, there was a, an event when, when, uh, Greg was campaigning, um, and it was right on the out, we were outside on his patio, and it was right when, um, uh, COVID was starting to ease out. And when, uh, people were asked questions about, you know, uh, asking questions, um, of Greg. One of the things that came up was Bernie said, you know, he said a lot of things. One of the things that he said was, um, he said, I, I have lived here for all my, like, all my life. I raised my kids. And I don't know any place yet. I didn't recognize any of these faces because all us lot moved up. And it just, and it's been changing the demographic and the nature of the community, and that really, like, struck a chord with both myself and Greg. And around the same time, the comprehensive plan that the town put out was published around the same, same sort of time. And, uh, um, one of the things that was indicated as a, as a current challenge community was, or one of the things that was needed was, um, more services, uh, for seniors, um, and, and for youth. And it was, we were coming on the back of, of COVID. And so it's almost like, you know, if forget, um, Kelly mentioned that the kids have forgotten to celebrate, I would all forgot to celebrate. Have some surprising and be in community with one another. So um, in twenty twenty, uh, two, uh, Greg and I formed, um, a formal five oh one C three nonprofit called the Tuscan Social. Um, it is designed to serve the town of Tustin and surrounding areas. Um, and really, it was established so that we could help, uh, create programming to build a strong community through connection and collaboration. Um, so we work, our model is that we will work with existing partners. Um, local states, so local not-for-profits, also, uh, existing local and state, um, organizations. Uh, we have a multi-generational approach, because I'm so much younger than Greg. Um, but actually, we have a multi, multi-generational approach, uh, that aims to ensure that our community is a great place to grow up and grow old. Um, and so we do that through robust community programming. I mean, basically, what we're, what we were trying to do is try to put back some of our positive away in the form of social, um, programming. So, um, we are entirely, funded entirely through board donations. We have an eight-person board of directors, and it's growing. Um, our programs are all entirely free, um, and accessible, uh, to the community. So our first year, oh, next slide, please. Um, they didn't let me do the thing because I always screw it up. So this is the, so then, um, our first year, uh, we were founded, actually, we started our programming in April, which is crazy because like that's just five seconds ago. And I've aged so much. So, uh, now we decided, so we've started our two programs, are the Sage Sessions and the Tustin Youth Club. Um, we, we started those eight, we, we started looking at the comprehensive plan, which indicated youth and senior were the two groups that were really looking for, uh, significant activities and resources in the area. But then we, uh, worked, so just prior to this, how we decided on what we would do was that we, uh, worked with, uh, the River Reporter, and we held, uh, some community listening sessions. We went out to the community, we said, what is, what do people want? And I think, um, so when I first met Amy, who's in the audience, um, uh, the thirteen-year-old, now thirteen, uh, who attends, I think. And one of, one of the, when we asked the community what they needed, and the community, you know, it was, you know, uh, the first thing was, uh, wanted some shade, and because it was the hottest day of the year that we were doing this thing, but then also, uh, creative and community arts, uh, were, uh, some of the, uh, feedback that the kids came back with. And for the scene, um, the senior event that we had, an overwhelming, um, an overwhelming request was for safe, social, regular, uh, opportunities to engage and socialize. So, uh, we started out with the, uh, Sage Sessions. I'm trying to read the notes. I'm like, I'm hard reading up what you're saying to me. Okay, so. We, um, in twenty twenty-three, we've expanded our, uh, managed to expand our partner base. Um, we launched our first two programs in April. We've held, my math is a little wrong, but approximately fourteen Sage Sessions. We've, um, held twenty-six youth club sessions. Um, our programs, Kelly spoke to this a little bit. It's my backup dancer.
Reagan's having fun.
Is it Reagan?
Yeah.
Bless. Um, so we, uh, our programs are consistently above or at capacity. Um, and with the youth club, we have between thirty-five, we, we have some in this room. And we've also now started to expand into the, uh, Western, to the Narrowsburg Public Library. And in the summer, we'll be, um, uh, working with the Tustin Heritage Community, uh, Garden for, with the kids. And, um, we are at thirty-five to forty kids. That is a lot of children in here. And there's a lot of energy, and it's a lot of children. And the only reason we don't, we don't have more is because we can't handle that. Like, the space is not safe enough, and we just simply don't have enough volunteers. And, um, and I can't cut that many watermelons. So, um, you know, and, and, and these kids are coming regularly with the program. As I say, it's free. They just have to do, you know, uh, uh, the registration. Um, the, uh, other things, uh, two other things that we were able to do, uh, this year is that we are reinstating the NextTrek Soft Recycling Program that was so brilliantly done, uh, with Brandy and the, um, the name of the Tustin Energy Commission Committee. Um, so, um, I basically broke the children into that, so we're now going to be, uh, be, uh, the boxes will be put out, uh, this week. In fact, next, uh, tomorrow. We are installing, um, a public, the, the kids' first piece of public art. Um, and, uh, to promote the new soft, uh, soft plastics recycling program. So, uh, we'll be, we'll be adorning, uh, at three on Main Street. So uh, the other piece, uh, the other thing that we've been able to do is, uh, is one of the things, the feedback that came back from the uh, session, we did with the seniors, the listening session, was the need for the Nutrition Site to come back. So Nutrition Site is a, um, was a regular and weekly, um, event run by the, uh, Sullivan Office for Aging, um, and it provided warm meals. They were home deliveries for people who were homebound. Um, but also a congregant meal, and that was a really strong request. It's taken, it's taken a minute to, to get it, get, get all the pieces, uh, back in place, but we're, we'll be able to launch that before the end of the year with Sullivan Office for Aging, and, uh, it'll be in St. Paul's Lutheran Church. So that's great. So, um, so the way we work with our partners, I know that's caused a little confusion, uh, sometimes that we have. Next slide, please. Um, the, each of our, each of the programs, we work with the people who are already doing the work with the constituents. Like, no one's reinventing any wheels, and they're amazing organizations. All we try to do is amplify what they can offer. And in fact, the Tuscan Social, Tuscan, uh, uh, Youth Commission is a perfect example of that. As you can see, they're busy as hell. Can you say that? Busy, they're busy. And, um, so what we do is with the, with the youth club is provide, like, we will, we fund it. We help organize the thing. We get, we pull the pieces together, get all the partnerships together. And while they help with their manpower and whatever, it allows, they're not, they're taking, divert funding for that. They can keep focusing on their core constituents. So, and, and their core, their core mission. So, uh, for, so Sage Sessions, our core partners are Growing Older Together. Um, and, uh, they've been a phenomenal partner. Um, youth, uh, Tustin, um, Youth Commission is our core partner for our youth club with Bethel Woods. Um, uh, you heard Kelly call it Bethel Woods on Main, but it's Bethel Woods Center for the Arts. It's their, uh, community program, and they've been stellar partners. Western Sullivan Public Library, the Narrowsburg, uh, branch, uh, as well as the DVAA. Um, Nutrition Side, as I mentioned, uh, Sullivan Office for Aging, St. Paul's Lutheran Church, and Growing Older Together. Um, and the community recycling, we're now doing, uh, uh, did you just say that was a good, I heard that. It does complement our name. Don't often get those. Um, so, uh, community recycling, uh, is Tustin Youth Commission. Um, uh, NextTrek, NextTrek's, the plastic bench guys and Bronosol. Oh, and I forgot, um, one other, uh, Beyond Plastics, which is still fabulous, um, thing. So that's that. Um, and then we've worked with additional partners that we've brought in, depending on our programming, um, as I mentioned, the Tustin Heritage Community Garden at the back here, the River Reporter and the Chi Hive, um, uh, gym and wellness space, as well as WJFF. So that's kind of our, our partnership. So, so the Tustin, uh, Youth Club. Um, too young to join, but not for much longer, this one year. Uh, we, uh, host the kids. They are, um, it's every Wednesday, uh, while school is in session. Um, Wednesdays from three to six P M. We host it here, and, uh, we've now expanded into the, the library, the basement, the basement library youth space. We take kids, uh, six to sixteen. Um, and as I said, we have thirty to thirty-five to forty kids per week. Uh, we have about five to seven volunteers. Everyone is a volunteer. Um, and the kids come principally from, uh, Sullivan West. Um, mostly from Sullivan West. Uh, we also have some from Elred, um, some who are homeschooled in the area and, um, from Homestead. So it's a real mix, and what's really delightful about that is that you get kids, there aren't many. One of the reasons we do what we do is because there aren't lots of places directly in the community where kids can get, you know, kids can can hang out together. So unless they really know each, most of them, they know each other from school. So what's been happening in this, with this group, is that they're now friendships are forming. I mean, it's amazing. Oh, and, and my favorite bit, so one, like, I keep talking about watermelons, but my God, these kids eat a lot of watermelons. So one of the things that we're looking to do, um, next year, next slide, please. Is we need watermelon crackers. I'm looking at everyone. I need, we need pretty volunteers. My husband has had it with me, so I need more volunteers. Um, to come and help out with, um, and I know most people are working fine, um, um, but we can, we can use all sorts of help. Um, I'm going to direct you later to our website. It looks like hell, it's because I did it. This is not my core skill set. So we need, you know, we do need some, um, some extra support, so we are looking to build not just our volunteer base, but the volunteer base in the community. Um, one thing I've really learned as I've come up here is how reliant these communities are. Oh, it's the watermelon picture, Greg, every time. Um, I've, how reliant these kids, you know, and these communities are on volunteers, and it is, um, um, so that's part of what we're looking to encourage. We're also looking to expand our youth club offering. Um, we're going to start doing Mondays and Wednesdays. Um, uh, which I haven't really absorbed yet. It'll, it'll happen. And, um, and then, uh, also to start expanding actually the programs that we're offering. So we're not just, uh, growing our programs, um, beyond youth and seniors. So offering, um, uh, family, um, uh, programs for families, but also intergenerational. Because a lot of that is, you know, the, the, the benefits on both sides of, you know, the age scale and whatever, intergenerational programming is just astonishing, and everyone benefits. So one of the things we're going to be starting is a, is a partnership with WJFF, um, led by, uh, Greg Triggs. Um, uh, I'm sort of like, people are familiar with Story Core, but it's a, a story, uh, conversations between the generations, um, for people in this area, and that will, um, spark, um, more additional programming. So, um, that website, that's real ugly, don't judge it. Um, is, uh, if you want to, uh, get in touch with us, and you have any questions, you want to volunteer, that's my email. Um, our website is, uh, is there, um, why that's actually useful, even though it's ugly, is that you can sign up to our mailing list and follow us on Instagram. That's, I can't believe I just said that. That can't be my final note. But anyway, follow us on Instagram. But that is really, uh, Tuscan Social. I'm also, uh, around to ask, answer any questions if anybody, uh, has them. But I hope that clarified some things. And with that, I will bounce back to my seat.
Thank you. Moving into the other regular board, business for the evening, uh, the payment of bills. General expended a hundred and ninety-two thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Highway seventy-three thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-four cents. Water twenty-four thousand four hundred and one dollars and twenty-two cents. Tour forty-five thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-one cents. The lighting district, one thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-three cents. Capital Highway Project, a hundred and forty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy cents. Capital Water Project, forty-four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, for a total of five hundred and twenty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars for the month. Um, myself and Bruce. And Kevin over the bills. Any questions? Any issues? I would accept the motion to pay the bills as presented. Go move. I have a motion in a second. One second. Further comments? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Uh, we'll go through division reports. Those that we don't read here, um, are going to be posted online with the minutes. Uh, you're encouraged to look at those. Uh, I believe the first report that we'll have, it's not going to be a report, uh, Energy Committee. The sin card has been received. Star for the lights. We'll now accept to be put in.
Hello, yeah.
You have no idea.
I do.
No, you don't. No, you don't. Uh, zoning revision committee, is there any report for that? We're still awaiting, so we'll go into the Conservation Advisory Committee.
I think it's not meet in October, but, uh, myself and Peter Manning met this morning, actually, by Zoom with the representative of empty engineering and land surveying. And, um, they're the group that we will contract with to help us with the National Fish and Wildlife. And um they're the group that we will contract with to help us with the National Fish and Wildlife Project for a space. Um, recreation uh plan. So um be ready, CAC, we're going to be meeting on a regular basis. Probably, well, probably not until next year because next month is Christmas. Holiday, so probably January. Narrowsburg Water and Sewer Committee met on Monday, November third at eight A M. And uh we reviewed the correspondence that were received. And um as far as water, well, number two, the Department of Health cited that the fence needed repairs. So the Water Department phoned five companies for estimates, the lowest bidder was Ketchum Fencing, and they'll do the work for three thousand eighty-one dollars. This sewer. Um, the code enforcement officer requested a backup pump to be purchased for the sewer plant. We don't have a backup. And that is important since the pump we have is uh paving. We also um, and I don't remember if it was for sewer or water, but we need a heat pump. For six thousand two hundred, oh, it's Stewart, six thousand two hundred dollars. Uh miscellaneous, there was a request for two pieces of equipment, a tom pactor and a concrete saw. Quotes were received and reviewed and um the booth voted on it and um the pump pactor, concrete saw will be purchased. The pump pactor, two thousand five hundred fifty-four, the saw, two thousand five hundred twenty-six. And they said on the flats. That well number two needs replacing and um instead of the sewer plant needs replacing as well. Grounds report. Little Lake Erie Culvert, it's, it is complete. The culvert is complete with the exception of the guardrails and they're on backwater. And that's too bad that that whole project can't be closed out, but it can't be until the guardrails are off. The infrastructure project, water uh continues to be coordinated by Delaware Engineering. And they said that the new water storage tank or the water tower will begin and end hopefully. The spring of two thousand twenty-four, there'll be a new water tower. They also, they're such a good company. I'm so pleased that we're working with them. They did uh put in our information and they said we do qualify for bill funding, which is that bipartisan infrastructure. Extra money that was uh that the government uh is providing. But the, the problem is we're not sure if we'll get it because we're on a list. And they just spend. Starting at the top and they spend down until there's no more money. Instead, we're. It's precarious where we are on the. Um. And that appears to be that water infrastructure. Project. Oh, we're waiting to hear about that lead inventory pipe, of lead pipe inventory. Uh we'll hear probably this month. Playground project is ongoing. The mound for small children has been installed and I'm told that the little children want the mound. We wait a contract from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation ground to develop the open basement recreation land. And we're really very, very close. We're just submitting the housework papers right now. Is the matter, Kelly?
Yeah.
Did you do it today or no?
I would gladly build.
But yeah, maybe tomorrow.
Yes.
Um, part of the Sullivan eight one eight technical assistance uh grant. Um, the plan for the reconfiguration of town hall and public space um has been prepared. That's me.
Any questions from the board today in any way? If not, I am going to open the public comment for the first section. Um, again, just raise your hand, you'll be recognized. I have you come up to here and then after we do the floor, we will do Zoom. And state your name and one person, please. Well, I got somebody coming from the back. Start. Yeah, I don't, you're on it. He didn't come up. Go ahead.
I'm very glad to hear that the SIM card has been obtained. Uh, does that mean that the town has an account with Horizon that they can now use to start the adjustments on the lights tonight, Dave?
Yes.
Amen. Okay, um. I have to mention that. For a long time, the library parking lot has been a, a question as to. What the light was doing there, who owned it, who paid for it. All of a sudden. After three months of asking at public comment. Nice egg showed up. Fixed the light, put in a new bulb that actually illuminates the parking lot. And waved at the, the library people and said. Thank you. Goodbye. We've done it. We still don't know who owns it, who's paying the bills, but that might be something that should be looked into.
The chairman of Tuscan pays the bills. That's part of the lighting district. It's one of the lights that was not identified to be replaced. So that's why Nice Egg replaced it.
Okay, thank you. That's another thing that I've learned tonight. Um, in the October meeting, uh the end of it, it was moved to executive session to discuss the sale of a property in town. There was an ad in the newspaper that said that the old May Memorial Hospital Clinic. On Fifth Street was being offered for sale. Can the board comment at this point?
No action was taken in executive session and we will not comment on no action taken.
Okay. What's the status of the pavilion? Is that going to be discussed or covered here?
I don't know if we'll discuss it. We'll bring it up. We'll find out when we get into old business.
Okay, um. Basically, that's what, all I have at, at this point, but I would like to suggest. If in future you're having a presentation. To the board and to the audience. That you break it up so you don't have two consecutive half-hour presentations taking up the first half, first hour of the meeting. I think there are people that have other questions that they would like to tell them. It might be easier if it was broken up. Thank you.
Anybody else on the floor? Here. Martin, go second.
Uh, my name is Jim Johnston. And um. I guess first I want to say. I've been in Narrowsburg since twenty sixteen and it's the best thing that's ever happened to me. Um, and I want to comment about the Tuscan Youth. Uh organization and Tuscan Social. It, it was really beautiful to come into the room tonight and see the children here. And see our future here. And um. In my occupation, I do a type of mental health practice where I work with. Adults, not children, but one thing I've learned. And that study after study after study will back up. Is a child that has difficulty in their life. Challenges at home. Hardship to overcome. If they have one person, one adult in their life who sees them and understands them. And makes them feel uh impaired for. And can reflect back to them their gifts. It can transform everything. So when I hear, I think Greta, you said sometimes there are thirty-five children at an event. The odds are that there are some children in that experience that are having a hard time. And. We, who knows who we're. Supporting if we support the Tuscan Youth Commission and Tuscan Social with regard to their programs for all ages. Uh, what kind of change that can bring in the world? We don't know. And I'm not trying to be. Melodramatic, but it's true. I see in my clients, if they've had one caring place in their life. They can grow up to do amazing things that make everything around them. So I just want to thank the community for my experience here. And uh encourage us to really get behind these programs for these kids. Thank you so much.
Hi, everybody. I'm Martin Higgins. I'm past president of the Narrowsburg Chamber of Commerce. I'm in Two Queens Coffee here in town. I've been here since two thousand and five. I don't have any kids. But uh in my capacity as the head of the chamber, which I haven't been for a few years, but. I met Crystal, maybe through that, maybe some other way. Um. And we got involved, you know, and we partnered together and I've seen that organization grow and do more things and. We're really happy to assist wherever we could with Christmas pre-lighting, we have logging days. I volunteered at. Halloween at the fort last year and. It's just such a joy to see the way that that group works to really take. I grew up partly in a rural area and I didn't know any of the other kids because I didn't go to the local school. So to see an area similar to where I grew up that, that just runs it differently and does it so well. With less volunteers, I just, I'm really proud of it. And I think that our community does it better and is a model for so many communities around us. That I just think we all should support it. And I do understand how a lot of people wouldn't know that it even exists if we don't have kids or if you're a weekender or if you don't. Spend time going to the things that they put on. I mean, Fourth of July has just been a monumental thing that everybody wanted something like that for so long and Tuscan Youth really. Brought that to life. So I just wanted to give a little kudos to Tuscan Youth and the group that does it still.
Um, so I'm gonna basically stand up again and support the Tuscan Youth, but from a different perspective. I moved here in nineteen ninety-five from Bethel, still an outsider, not a local. But went to high school here, graduated here, raised my kids here. Um. The Tuscan Youth is to be supported, not just while I'm raising my kids. I'm a local business owner. Like metal, many local business owners struggling to find staff. Had a great day today. Wanted to, like, I wanted them, really. I wanted tacos from local. Called them up, the machine said, hey, no staff. No food today. That's something we're facing everywhere. I see it. I see the hair in, you know, they need a dishwasher. They're not going to open. They need this, they need that. We are a tourist town. We have bars, we have coffee shops, canoe libraries, we have the river, a lot of second homeowners. Airbnb and rental homes are huge. Third Narrowsburg right now, you get a thousand plus. Now. They include outside areas. So I actually did the research in the past month. A hundred and forty-six Airbnbs in the town of Tuscan, out of that thousand. I personally own two. Uh, one in Lucky Lake. Not exactly the best part of Narrowsburg. I'm sure most of you think, I, I mean, fire department can't get down there for another meeting, but. At that little house in Lucky, I've hosted thirty families since August first. Thirty families have come. I also own one on School Street. I posted twenty-nine there. So fifty-nine families have come to our town to eat at our places, to go to our places. And our places aren't going to keep their doors open without staff. What promotes staff? Families living here, kids events, community things, something like the youth group, very, very much. I started my business in two thousand eleven. Six employees. Four of them lived in Narrowsburg. I currently have four, fifty-seven. Fifty-seven employees. I have eleven full-time employees, one lives in Narrowsburg. Twenty part-time employees, one lives in Narrowsburg. Thirteen high schoolers work for me. Three of them live in Narrowsburg and they're all here. Two of them are mine. Thirteen returning college students, while Fallback, Homestead, Sullivan West, zero live in the town of Narrowsburg. Our town. Needs more support for the kids. The park is huge. I second what the first person said. Families cannot travel. They can't. I was fortunate. I'm not even gonna lie. I could go to Circle Park. I could go to Holly. I could go to other places. There were so many families. I served on the youth board. Um, right up until Crystal came and I don't know when Ali was there. I did like the little term. It was great. And the twins were a lot, so I backed out. But there were families that couldn't go to the faraway events and we pushed and pushed to have local events. Because it's not fair if the Reeves and the Westens and everybody else can go. But the people who live in our town can't. They pay the same taxes and they should be able to go. We have to support these programs. Or. You're gonna keep getting people putting out signs that say they can't open their doors. Because you need working people. It can't just be a tourist town and a second home. Community. It's great for me. I don't have to open doors. I clean them and I work on them. So. It still works for me personally, but it doesn't work for a community. It really doesn't.
Thank you much.
Hi, Allison Lord. I have a business in town and I live in the flats. Are we, first of all, I love Tuscan Youth. I got to work with them when I was on the chamber and was. Beyond impressed with the dedication, the hard work, the volunteer hours, um everything they put into creating. A landscape for kids to enjoy here because there's not a lot. Of social spots for kids to be, especially after COVID and everything else. And these guys work tirelessly for the kids. Um, of this area. Uh, and secondly, can I talk about the park? Can I talk about the pavilion yet?
Public comment.
Okay, um. I have been talking with Greta a lot about the idea. Of a youth center here, of a place for older kids to gather too, because. My son is now seventeen, so he's aging out of a lot of this stuff, but. There's no place for them to hang, especially when it's not. Um. Monetarily engaged. So. The idea of the pavilion, they worked to get a grant. Which was amazing. And then I heard that there was a lot of pushback and a lot of people were upset. About the idea of a pavilion in this town in the park. And honestly. It blew my mind that people were opposed to having a pavilion. A covered area in a park where people gather with their kids. I understand there's back and forth about a kitchen, a bathroom, or this or that. But there's no place to change kids' diapers. There's no place to get out of the shade or get out of the sun. And a pavilion can be done tastefully. I know that people want to have input on the design and I understand all that. But it, I've been seeing a lot of these signs, plant trees, not pavilions, which. I mean, I love planting trees, but trees are going to take twenty years to give any shade. In that park, with, the park is also being redesigned for more usage. Um, and I just. I don't understand the pushback, honestly, like for having a pavilion where families can gather. In town. I don't think it's gonna. Bring vandalism or hoodlums or I think it's going to promote community. So I live down there. I'm right around the corner from it. Um, I would love to see it. I'd love to support it. I'd love for the community to come together to figure out how everybody can be comfortable with it, be happy with it, be safe. All the above, but. That's it. That's all I have to say.
So my name is Amy Potter. I am thirteen and I live on. And. I go to the youth programs and they are a lot of fun. I've found some amazingly inspiring people and it has really put me socialized a lot. They're doing their job. They're helping. And that's.
I'm Lindsay and this is my kid. We live down on the flats. Uh, my husband is Craig. He works for the water department. Everything that Amy said is absolutely true. She has loved the programs that Tuscan Social puts on, Tuscan Youth. I will say for me personally, I tried to be on Tuscan Youth. I was a part of Tuscan Youth for. I was a part of Tuscan Youth for one week, I think, maybe a week and a half, and I quit. Because I still help. I volunteer when I can. They put in so many hours early in the morning before work and then the kids go to school and then they go to their job. And then after school, they get the kids and they go and they start working again. And they're working until like eight, nine o'clock at night. I'm like, I can't do it. It's too much for me. But that's what they're doing and they do this all year long. So kudos to them and thank you. We take advantage of all of the programs that they do. Most of them are free, which is great for a family of four and this economy. Yeah, my daughter specifically has got to meet people in her fields of interest. It seems like she wants to do, she wants to go to college. She wants to go to college for the arts and she's been able to meet mentors in, in the community in Narrowsburg that work in those fields. She's inspired. They're inspiring to her and they are helping to guide her along a path that I, I don't know, you know, anything about. So I'm entirely grateful to them. And when our son, Sam, well, ages up, he's four now, he's got a couple more years until he can really get into it. He's excited to join as well. So thank you, guys.
Hi.
He just started doing her.
I don't like speaking in front of you. It's a lot for me, but my name is Jennifer Flanagan. My husband's owned our house here since 2002. We met in 2015. And we've been coming, I've been coming with him pretty much every weekend since then. We got married and we had two kids. And we were living on Long Island full-time and we decided we wanted to raise our girls here. Narrowsburg is a lovely place, a really great place for us. We've met pretty much everyone from the commission. I too also went to one committee meeting. Was all gung ho. I want to be on the board, but I, I don't have the speed, patience and, you know, energy to do what they do. And the reason I don't usually come to these meetings is because I'm usually home with them and it's really difficult to get out here. But we frequently play playground a lot. We did get to check out the new dome that was there. The girls loved it. We had such a good time there. But we would love the pavilion. There's no shade over there and that's like our main, and we love to have our lunch there, but, you know, constantly reapplying our sunblock, which you should use anyway, but it would be nice to have a pavilion or to be able to have like a kids' birthday party or something like that. But anyways, that's really all I have to say. Just want to thank the girls and everything they do for the girls. My girls, they really enjoy going for all the activities. That's it.
Hi, my name is Haruka. I'm a mom of two. I have a three-year-old and a seven-year-old. And we moved here three years ago during the pandemic. And this is about the park, so maybe I'll explain this soon. But when we moved here, the first thing we did is go to the playground, because that's where you meet families. And we were so lonely in this place to meet people, but there was no one there. Or thought, oh, maybe it's the pandemic. Maybe there are no children here, until I met DS and she told me about Tuscan Youth Commission. And then all of a sudden, we were surrounded by children and adults. It's not that people, there are no children in this town. It's that people don't go to that park. And now after living here three years, I know why. It's because that park is just not functional. My three-year-old, when we're out, he needs to pee two to three times. We need to wash his pants. We need a place to change his diaper. Having a porta potty is just not enough. And in the summer, it gets so hot. Literally, my boys hide under the slide in the tiny shade just to get out of the heat. So sadly, we don't go to the park anymore. We drive twenty minutes to Calicoon Holly Domes, where they have a pavilion and they have a bathroom. And I meet people there that tell me, oh, I grew up in this park and now my children are playing here and they're making beautiful, like, generational memories, which is sadly not what we can say about our park because nobody goes there. And what the park lacks, Tuscan Youth Commission and Tuscan Social is providing, like they said, a weekly spot where the kids can hang out. And now my kids are part of the community and adults that genuinely care about it. One of the main reasons my husband and I didn't decide to move back to New York City is because of these, these ladies on the commission. Because if my kids grow up here, they're a part of, you know, people that, and they'll grow up together until they're in preschool. So it's a great part of our life and really want to say to the board, I really hope you will recognize the importance of having a functional park for the kids. Because when you think about it, a playground is where the kids create their memory and they will cherish those memories for the rest of their lives. And for me, I hope that my kids too will one day bring their own kids to the park and be able to tell them how much they loved growing up in this town. Thank you.
Hello, my name is George Kane and I am not part of Tuscan, however, I do come from Ireland. I'm going to tell you something that people who even run Tuscan Youth do not know. We talked about how it's helped children, et cetera. I'm now going to tell you a story of a young little girl who damn near gave up on her life. She grew up with many, many physical ailments. They didn't think she was gonna make it past two years old. Her mother is now dying of multiple sclerosis. Her father, well, he has too many obligations with town firefighting, et cetera, et cetera, who just honestly does not have enough home time with his children. Not, not because he's bad or anything, he's just out for the whole town, so to speak. This little girl had no direction growing up. Like I said, they didn't even think she was gonna live. Well, I got the bright idea, having worked with many people here into Tuscan Youth as well as the Bob, et cetera. Let me bring her over here. Let's, let's see if she knows maybe some new friends, et cetera. I did that. And the members took her in as one of their own. I recently got a phone call from her, the family's gonna be moving away out of state to a different state. And she said, I don't want to leave. Well, that's normal. I don't want to leave where I am either. However, she said, I've never told anyone this. But if it wasn't for the love that I was showering with the Tuscan Youth, I'd have killed myself. If that doesn't tell you what these people do, nothing will. Thank you.
Evening, everybody. My name is Brenton. You might recognize me from the hospital, Guard Health, that feels I'm an ER nurse over there. I've been an ER nurse for thirteen years. My wife and I moved out here almost twelve years ago. I'm actually originally from Never Say, on the other side of the county. Some of the things that I remember growing up, very, very strong core memories are with the youth commission that I grew up with. We, you know, we have, we have very plentiful opportunities, the Little League, trips to baseball games, the Castle Cougars and Mountain Dale Mountain Lions, both of which are no longer in, in function. But the big thing that I remember is just being able to connect with friends, get out, go skating, skater's world again, defunct clothes. There isn't much to do in the area with our kids. Many of us, including myself, I drive thirty minutes to work. My wife does as well. If you want to go and do anything productive, something like a birthday party, you're forced to look at Scranton, Middletown, Vinghamton, or even further. There just isn't a lot going on in Sullivan County. I started to do some further research. Actually, it was a project that I worked on in nursing school. These statistics are all brought to you by health.nyork.gov. And you can look them all up for yourself. They have a really good interactive site. You can do whatever you want with these statistics, okay? Obesity is rampant in Sullivan County. The percentage of school age children who are obese, meaning ninety-fifth percentile above, twenty-one point three percent. The percentage of school age children who are overweight, eighty-five to, to a hundred percent percentile, sixteen point seven, making over thirty-eight percent of our children are overweight or obese. The poverty, children in poverty in Sullivan County is almost thirteen percent, twelve point seven. The annual median household income as of 2020, sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. So expendable resources, money to do things, going on vacation, getting out with your family. It's not happening. And this, again, that's from 2020, post-pandemic, post-inflation. I'm sure everybody feels that stress right now. There's nice to have something local, something that you can depend on. You have a couple hours to get outside with your kids. You have a park. Most towns locally nearby have parks that have resources, playgrounds, activities. My son Ryan, he's seven, and just this year, I'm to find out the, the activity center that was down there that I helped build. I will say it was put in hastily. I will agree with that. But he was able to do a muscle up on the bar down there, so proud of himself. You know, just getting to be bigger, stronger and more healthy. The percentage of disconnected youth in this county is seventeen point three percent. And that is defined as young people aged twenty, as fourteen to twenty-four, who are homeless in foster care, involved in the justice system, or he either unemployed or enrolled in an, or not enrolled in an educational institution. Seventeen point three percent. The number of high school dropouts in this county is eight point five percent. Main thing is that there has to be something for kids to look forward to. As Jim said, as a, as a mental health counselor, I myself, in my line of work, take care of countless. And I can see the, the correlation from ten years ago when I first started to today. We're seeing easily six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred percent more children who suffer from mental health disorder, requiring hospitalization. I could, I could tell you stories for hours about young people who are distressed upon stress and consider taking their own lives. And as a father of three, that is terrifying. We need to do good for our, for our community, for the people who will grow up to be future town supervisors, to be possibly the president, your professional sports athletes. Anything that, that we can do for our kids and for our community is for the greater good. You know, it just, it, it makes sense, right? And as a whole, Sullivan County continues to rank sixty-one out of sixty-two counties and has done so for over two decades in almost, in nearly all negative health indicators. Our roads, you, you hear about the seventeen B corridor, which I travel every day. How many fatal accidents in the last twelve months on that road? You know, every time you travel, you're forced to go out to, to a town nearby to go on to a birthday party. That could be your family. It could be DS family. It could be your family. And, and with that, I just ask that, you know, we, we continue to work as a, as a team here. You know, a couple of weeks ago, I took a drive around town and saw signs that, that reflected a somewhat unsettling plant trees, but not pavilions. But I asked, why can't we have both? Why is it always?
Can we go to Zoom? Bring anybody else on the floor before we move into Zoom? Yes, sir.
So just quickly, my name is Alex Pros. I'm a, I'm a teacher at Sullivan West. I live in Narrowsburg. I have a nine-year-old son. Well, getting up there. And I just want to follow up with what everyone's saying. My, my students do research projects where they uncover those same statistics. And, you know, Sullivan County is last, I think, or second to last in terms of distance. People have to go for recreational activities. And yeah, like Alex said, it just seems like a no-brainer to improve a park, you know? I mean, that's, that, these kids are awesome. I love my job. Like, working with kids is amazing. They deserve the very best. They're, they're awesome, awesome kids, honest, hard-working kids. And I remember moving up here in the, during the pandemic and going to the park with my son and it was like, you know, I was like hitting baseballs and then like run to all the bases and play every position because there's like no other kids down there. It's strange, you know? Felt like Bugs Bunny. But yeah, it's weird to have an empty park when you have all these awesome kids that just deserve the best. There may be a drop in the bucket to build a pavilion, but let's, you know, start somewhere. Other towns have them, you know? We drive all over the place to, to, to go to soccer camps and things where other towns can host. This is an awesome town, you know? We should be able to do that same, same type of stuff. So it seems like a no-brainer to me. Let's, let's improve the town in whatever way we can. Kids deserve the best. I echo, you know, basically what everyone said and I'm extremely grateful for all the hard work of Kelly and Greta and everyone that puts in all the hours to, to help the kids in this town.
My name is Dawn Carreri and I live in Narrowsburg. I just wanted to say that it's so nice to see so many people come out to support the pavilion and the Tuscan Youth. The pavilion is a great idea. I was surprised when I attended a board meeting and heard that there were so many negative comments. And it really has bothered me month after month of attending the meetings, either in person or online, that there have not been many positive comments. And so it's great to see all of you people come out to be positive for the pavilion. If we have a pavilion, a place for shade, it's just going to make people come even more and stay longer. And a bathroom would be great. Like I said, you want the bathroom for the kids? I love the bathroom for me. You know, walking around the flat sometimes, oh, it's like, let me run to get back to my office. The youth commission, I served on the youth commission for twenty years. Crystal, I served with her mom and we fought hard for our youth commission. And we did it on a very limited budget. And I don't know that we would have had the energy to do what these girls do. My husband and I went last year to Whoville to, to see no children. My grandchildren are older, so they, no way that they want to go and see Whoville. But to go and see what they made was amazing. And you all should be supported and our town should be proud to have you ladies with, you know, putting your family second sometimes to do this work. I applaud you all.
Who else before, before we go to Zoom? Do you have anything on Zoom?
We just have one public comment.
I've got one comment from Josh Murphy. Sorry, I have to hop off. I wanted to comment regarding the situation on the flats. First off, the Tustin youth is an amazing group of people, probably the best in the county. As a baseball coach, hearing that the field and the flats may be taken away would be the absolute sin. We need to support the kids and their activity. Let's not put our local youth on the back burner for secondary homeowners who don't understand how amazing the flats are for kids, not only in the town of Tustin, but for the towns in the surrounding area. Thank you, Tustin Youth Commission, for everything you do. And do you have any other comments? On, on whom? Okay.
I would like, can I comment? Okay, hi. This is Jen Porter. Everybody, thanks so much. I'm, I have comments to support the Tustin youth and Tustin social, but I'm so inspired by everything everybody said, which, if you didn't already support them, it's just, that was really inspiring. So thanks to everybody and all the commenters. My comments are that we love the Tustin youth commission. Every single holiday basket, toy, Christmas, Halloween event has been really so wonderful. My husband and I have been raising our three kids here in Tustin since twenty eighteen. They're now thirteen, eleven, and almost ten. And our kids can't drive a car yet, so having things nearby is extremely important. And as many speakers prior to me said, these, these are really the years that are building their connection to the area, which will go fifty years from now. My husband's family was here for many, back in the eighteen hundreds, you know, his great-great uncle running the lava, was the lava postmaster, which is like the street we live on now. And, um, anyway, really care about this place. And I, I really think the park, investing in the park and the proposed pavilion would be great assets for this community and, and our family. And thank you so much for supporting the youth and the pavilion.
Uh, we're going to move into old business, uh, four point one, the park project. And I think, Janice, is just an update on where we're at with the mound.
Oh, the mound is small. And, uh, I was getting feedback from mound users, which are small children. Um, yeah, so it's done.
Nope, I think that's all. I don't know that we've got any, anything more to discuss as far as the pavilion work at this time. Uh, on their old business also, which is to be determined. And Ken, I think it's time for our highway bond. We're going to have to go on that.
Highway what?
The bond.
What's the timing on the?
Yeah, it was all, everything was done though.
We were waiting on lower rates, right? And today, it seemed like that maybe, whatever.
I just know I have a book to read.
Exactly. Got to pay the bill.
Into new business, we need to do the Narasburg water and sewer re-levis. I will need a resolution without it to supervise or by hereby be authorized and directed trends, transmit the following list of properties served by the Narasburg Water District against with the liability for past due water rents are here and after indicated that Sullivan County Board of Legislators requesting that the board to levy to some specified against property liable, a statement not in the column labeled reassessed, water rents in the twenty twenty-four assessment roll for the town of Tustin. I have a motion from Jane and a second from Kevin. Further discussion? All in favor?
I oppose.
And exactly the same for the sewer rates, a motion.
I'll read that.
One second. And all in favor? I oppose. Uh, five point two is authorize the septic tank pumping for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. I will move the motion for that. I have a second from Greg. All in favor?
I oppose.
Uh, authorization to authorize for the advertisement of the highways, uh, sand and stone bid.
I'll make that note.
A motion from Greg, a second from Bruce. All in favor?
I oppose.
Five point four, we have the expenditure of highway monies. The only problem I have is I don't see a number in the highway expenditure that I don't think we want to approve it without a number in there. I think it was one. Um, I don't know if that was just a typo from Don, so we can, I think we can put that off to next. Yeah. And where did it go? Blue way. Yep. So, uh, general repairs in a sum of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, for general repairs upon the sixty-two miles of the road. Um, he does have Harry Pond for a distance of two miles, but we are missing the summer net. So Doug, get that. We're going to paper that one. Uh, Little Lake Erie Culver project. I have a change order for Rutledge Construction. And the original contract price was one million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-six thousand, forty-six cents. Uh, there is a net increase in change order of six thousand, five hundred and six dollars and thirty cents uh, for a change order of one million, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and two dollars and seventy-six cents. A motion to approve the change order for I have a second from Bruce. You all in favor?
I oppose.
Uh, Buck Morehead.
Um, what do you need?
Um, we've got the report down. What's that? No, go ahead. No, please. You've gone this long.
I, I mean, that's for what you're looking for.
Do we need anything? We've got the approved, approved. Are we sending a presentation from bottom?
Oh, if we, right, we could do that.
See if it's available from that regular meeting. Um, five point seven, the lawn, uh, lawn mowing, building maintenance, two separate things. I'd like to put out authorization to put out our lawn mowing bid now.
Before.
For it to come back in February. So give us a couple of months to get it out there. Maybe contact some of the companies. The same with building maintenance, put out, uh, if you can find somebody that can do like doing this. Which what? He wants you to buy goats. Did my goats get them? Flowers and all.
You need a motion. From the lawn maintenance.
We'll add that into my, I'll move that.
We tried to create that as one whole job or separate job?
It'll be three separate.
Three separate bids.
Yeah.
How are we increasing the scope for, for roads?
That would be gardening, uh, as well.
Yeah, maintenance of the path and the, and.
But it wasn't part of last year's lawn mowing.
It just had to be added this year. Yeah, that's what the, all of the increases that we had in the budget were to cover this.
But that's reflected, that would be reflected in the.
Yeah. And I can send that to the board, just pre-deal before it goes out, just to make sure we got all the, all the spots that are in there because there are quite a few. Um, five point eight, so we've had a cleaning person that cleans everything for us. Uh, most of the time is now been set up and take down for all the meetings. Yeah.
Five point seven, yeah, the motion, the second.
The cleaning in the inside, not so much cleaning, but the cleaning has been, uh, becoming more and more. Uh, would like authorization to contact some local cleaning companies, put it out for bid. See if we got anybody that might be interested in.
How many hours?
Uh, we'd have to do it. We'd have to have them invest? Yeah, I think they really, to be fair, it would be, you know, have them come in, say how many hours, um, and how much per hour.
Okay. So that's just now the bid. Okay, I'll move on.
All in favor? Uh, five point nine is a motion to approve Frank Burkle to the Sullivan County Fire Advisory Board. I have a motion.
Oh, second.
I have a second. All in favor? I oppose. Uh, do we want to set our year-end meeting now or do you want to wait till next year? I know everybody's got busy schedules. Some people are on cruise ships. Um, November, December, twenty-ninth is the last working day of the month. It's a Friday.
I could do it.
Oh, I could do it.
Bruce is off.
Yeah, I'm a little foggy.
Uh, what time? Ten o'clock? Ten o'clock?
Ten in the morning?
Yeah, a Friday, sure. That interferes coffee class? Can they start like a half hour late? No. How long does it go for?
Noon. And then lunch.
We could, we could do nine-thirty. Oh, you started then?
I can do eight o'clock.
I'd be with you eight o'clock.
I like the morning ladies, but not eight o'clock. Twelve o'clock? Yeah.
Could we do one before we go later?
At the meeting.
Twelve-thirty? Twelve o'clock.
Twelve o'clock.
Under me. Everything is a compromise here.
Oh, that's very nice. Thank you.
But it's not eight o'clock. Um, before I request the executive section, the purposes of this continuing employment history of a particular individual, um, I will go with to meeting reminders, the public hearing for the Narasburg sewer rates are December fifth at six-thirty. The Tustin highway position applications are due by December fourth. We're still looking for animal control position person, which is part-time, anybody that loves dogs and cats. Good part-time job.
You know, to December fourth.
Catches? No, that's. And I'm going to open up public comment. Um, unless the board wants to do their comment before the public comment. Okay. So we're going to open up the last public comment session before we go into an executive section. So if there's anybody else that would like to say something, ladies.
This one?
You did raise your hand.
I did raise my hand. Hi, um, I'm Elizabeth Reese and this is Nicole. Um, we've been using the park a very long time. I've played probably every sport it has to offer there. And I'd like to say I love going there. Just this summer, I brought a soccer team there. We played basketball. But after playing those client-sensitive games, we kind of drifted over the porta potty to get some shade. So it's not a wonderful place to find shade. It's really not. And I can't tell you how many times we've traveled to center, to the Delaware Youth Center, just because they have that pavilion that offers so much. How many grad parties I've gone to in Calico Center just for that pavilion? Crazy. One of my neighbors, who lives right next to me, had their grad, had their grad party at the Calico Center, just because it has that pavilion and that open field to set up a volleyball net and just have people there. A pavilion is a great idea, and I think you can include trees there. You can make a medium. A medium is always available, but it takes a lot more time. And I don't think a grad party for me there is possible because there's not a space to sit down. And those parks that have those areas are open to so many more ideas. You can bring the youth commission down there. You can have so many more activities open to these kids when you, when you have a place to rest. And given these parks where I've sat under a small shady space, mom cracks open the cooler and hands me an ice pop, best days ever. But those are core memories and they require just a little bit more time, a little bit more effort. And honestly, I think pavilion, great idea, and that's why I chose to speak after all those that presented in front of me, Ms. Flanagan, Ms. Ward, Ms. Haruka. Bear with me. Um, like, these are all great ideas and it offers so much. And I think moving forward, it could be a really, really nice space, and it already is. But sometime, it's an effort.
You want to speak to? Oh, um, I just wanted to say thanks for the, the youth mission. I remember going on so many trips. I just thought it was like the greatest thing in the world. And I probably shouldn't mention this, but it's going to be a core memory. It shouldn't be, but it's so funny. It's, it's not funny at all, but, um, I remember we went to like a Disney on Ice and the girl, like, they lifted her up and they dropped her and she got so bad. But I remember like the ones right back, we were like freaking out, like me, it was like Matt Loma and Liz, it's Alyssa. We were like, is she going to be okay? Like, we worried about her. It was crazy. We dropped someone like. And on ice too. Oh, my goodness. But, um, no, I love going on trips. I think it's one of the greatest things that this community has to offer and, um, its continuance is one of the most important things to me. And I'm aging out. I'm going to be out of here, but for the people that are still here and they're growing up, it's wonderful. And I just wanted to say.
Question, there is no town board meeting on the, uh, meeting reminders? Are you not having one in December? Oh, no, we are.
So there's a regular one?
It'll be the regular one, yeah. The eagle eye of the reporter. Any other public comments? Take a motion to enter into executive section. Yeah, that's me.
Okay, your meeting is ending?
Anybody on the whole bow?